Good evening.
Hi, John. Hi, Ralph.
We'll start my video. Hold on. Here we are. Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Although I wasn't good for a while, I had to spend three days in the hospital with the atrial fibrillation problem, but that's been resolved, so.
Oh, no. Oh, that's too bad. You feeling good?
I'm fine.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
That's good. I'm back at work.
Good.
And going PT, so I'm getting the strength back in my leg.
I'm saying it again.
I'm getting the strength back in my leg, my hip.
Yep.
No, still long haul.
Oh, that's... Claire had a hip replacement, so I know.
Yeah, she's been really well with it.
Yeah. We have three people, four people.
Yep. Not a lot on the agenda, but good to touch base.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Hi, Beth.
How are you?
Good, good.
Ready for fall?
Yeah, it's here, like it or not.
Right.
My garden's not too thrilled about it, but, you know.
Yep.
After tomorrow, we'll be back on track.
Well, they say it's gonna warm up again, so I hope.
Well, I've got everything covered with sheets and pillowcases right now, so.
Hello. Hi, Bessa. Mary.
Mary. Okay, continue. And I'm gonna get off screen, so I'll wave now. I'll just listen.
Okay.
How's your leg?
It's getting better. I started PT two weeks ago.
Okay, have you been going to MOG?
Uh, I'm going there. The MOG isn't open, but yes, that's where I'm at.
Right, right, yeah. Is it crowded? I mean, there's a lot of people there?
Yeah, they have been. I had one 11 o'clock appointment and it was packed.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so they're busy. It's slow getting my strength back, but slowly but surely.
Right, right. I hate to say this, but age probably has something to do with it.
You think? I'm back at work.
Gail, you did say you're back at work now?
I'm back at work, yeah. I've been back from the end of August.
Okay, so, yeah, that's progress at least.
Right, right, yeah.
I'm down to using a cane, and I can get around in the house without the cane.
Okay, okay.
So, but I'm not too steady enough to be outside without it.
Right, right. But it does help you, you know, it's good for your balance, too.
Right.
The cane, yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Gail, do you know who... Is everyone supposed to be here or not, or do you know?
I didn't hear from anyone that they weren't coming. I know Carol asked last week if the meeting was this week, and I said it was. So, yeah, he showed.
It's funny, my computer's not letting me, like, switch screens, so are there really only six of us on here? Wait, seven of us on here now?
Yep, and Ellen, she's on.
Oh, here we go, okay.
So, we're missing Brian, Gail, and Barbara.
Okay. Yeah, and we still have, you know, a minute or so to go, so.
Yep, yep.
Give it a few.
So, how is school going at Con College for better?
It's going... I mean, I'm still at home, but, you know, Doug's going in. It's going really well. I mean, their testing protocol is amazing. They're testing everyone who's on campus twice a week.
Oh, dang.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, I mean, basically, that's what's allowing them to have in-person, you know, classes and stuff. And they had... They actually sent home, I think it was 15 kids, and it wasn't even for big parties. It was basically like small gatherings, but that weren't social distance. And they were like, no, look, the community's trusting you to do the right thing, and if you don't do the right thing, you're going home. You know, they can study remotely.
Wow, that's good, that's good.
Yeah, it really... I saw the letter that went out to everyone reminding them about the rules, and it really, really emphasized, like, you know, the city of New London, the county, you know, just the people in this community, like, trusted you to come back. And it was really well done.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot of the colleges have done that. They've had to really, really crack down.
Yeah, and I think Con just, like, from the very beginning said, like, these are the rules, and we're gonna stick with them. We're not gonna turn a blind eye, which is what some schools are doing. I mean, Trinity right now is a mess, you know, so.
Providence College is a huge mess.
Is it?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, it's... I don't know, but.
I'm impressed that they're doing it twice a week.
Yeah, it's not cheap, that's for sure.
Yeah. Well, are they doing pool testing, where they're just gathering a sample from everybody and putting in testing it all together?
No, they're testing every individual, and that person's getting their individual results.
Wow, I thought most of the schools were doing pools.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot. But, I mean, basically, that's why they told certain staff that, like, I mean, I'm not even allowed on campus right now, so.
Oh, wow, huh.
Yeah, so if you're not part of the testing, you can't come on campus, period, so, like, okay.
We have a volunteer in the historical room from Con... Actually, she's a paid worker from Con College, and she was telling us about the testing twice a week.
Yeah, is she working on campus?
Um, yes, she is. And she comes in once a week to help Andrea with the digitizing in the historical room.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, and they pay the historical.
That's really... That's awesome. Well, it looks like... Do we have enough people to get started?
I think so. If I have a clue.
Okay. And I'll go through and I'll read it off for you. So, it's 7:02, and this is Rebecca Nash. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. As far as role, Ellen, just so you know who's on the call, we have Gail, myself, and tell me if I need to go slower or faster. All right, John Baldock is here, Carol is here, Liz is here, Ralph is here. Ralph, that's you, RSGJ, right?
It is me.
Okay, great. Mary McGrathen is here as well, Cheryl is here, Ellen, you know you're here. Actually, Cheryl, are you on here twice?
I think she was off and then came back on.
Okay, all right.
She's on there twice.
Yeah, so, but we still have enough people. So, we're missing Brian and Barbara.
Okay, I just didn't hear you say Beth, but you did. I guess you said Elizabeth.
Okay, yeah. Thanks. Yep, no problem.
I didn't even catch that.
Okay. All right, so could I get a motion, let's see, to approve the meetings from the minutes from the prior meeting from August 17th?
John moved... I'll make most of the second minutes.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second? No.
Okay, I think that was Carol, yeah? Carol, you're coming through very faintly, but I could see your lips moving, so I think that was you seconding, right? Okay. Any discussion on the minutes? I had one question on there, and it may be irrelevant, but the... Sorry, I'm trying to find where it was. It had to do with the... Actually, you know what? Skip it, it's fine, because I think we did it not as a motion, so, yeah. So, if there's no other questions on the minutes, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Can you hear me?
There, Brian?
Yeah, is that Brian?
Yeah.
Brian joined.
Okay, Ellen, Brian just jumped into the meeting as well.
Okay, so it's just Barbara that we're missing.
Correct.
I was not voting against. I was just trying to see if I could be heard.
No, I appreciate that. I didn't see it pop in, so. All right, so the minutes were... They're approved. Sorry, I'm sort of scrambling here. As far as correspondence, there were reappointment requests, and I'm trying to remember who they were for. I think it was Carol, Cheryl, Ralph, and myself. And basically, I recommended, first of all, everyone agreed to stay on, so thank you very much for that. And I recommended that everyone, you know, stay on, and I assume we'll be hearing from the town hall saying we're all set, so. As far as the treasurer's report, Carol, it sounds like you have June, July, and August?
I think it's a work in progress. Am I correct on that, Carol?
Yes, okay. I did do some. I sent them to you, Gail, late this afternoon, so you probably didn't see them.
Okay.
They're all preliminary anyway, in a sense. I did do the June report, the regular June report. I had that, and that matches the bank's subtotal and so forth. And, but then in June, or in July each year, we have to do another report for June, a final report for June that closes out the books of the fiscal year. And a lot of times, there's stuff that is straggling into... It's being paid in July, or it's being paid even later, and, but it comes from the previous fiscal year. It was obligated then, and it takes a while to... Takes a while to get it all together and go back and restructure the reports so that it fits. Well, because not everything has been recorded at the bank by the town. The town has been paying some of these bills, as I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Gail.
Yes, sir.
Which the town pays and then reimburses themselves from our account. And they've been paying the bills, but they haven't taken the money out of our account, so we don't have any way to show that it's out of there. So, it's still on the books for us, and I guess eventually he took one batch out, but there's still some waiting. So, there is a July... Let's see, I did the June one, but not the full-year June one. I did a July one, and I did an August one. But keep in mind that in both cases, there's gonna be a little shuffling around even of that, because the number you start with in the new fiscal year depends a little on what was left at the end of the last fiscal year. There's a budget, but there's also the carryover in the budget. So, some of those things haven't really settled down yet. There were other expenditures that weren't reflected, because the town hasn't taken it yet. Um, let's see, I wrote this out so that I could try to explain it clearly. They're sure it's taking longer to reconcile all this, because the town still, at the end of, mid-September, still hasn't gone back and taken all that's needed to finish it up. So, there are reports, but under... And they balance, basically, but it's... Keep in mind that they're going to get tweaked later on when the town takes care of their end of it. There's a correction for last fiscal year that'll show up in the adjusted June one, that there was 56655, which was a grant to the seed library, which never got put in as income, as revenue. So, that, as well as related expenditures from it, will all go into last year's fiscal year 2019, 2020, when I do the June reconciling report. So, yeah, Gail's showing that there. There was... Yeah, that one, it doesn't really add up quite right, but I made the notes to you in the letter, Gail. And then a couple of things that I can note, since you don't have them in hand. But there were a lot of generous donations recently, a notable number, I would say. So, that in June, there was $500 from John Porter. In July, there were $500 memorial for Thomas Lee, $217 memorial to Ruth for Ruth Gardner and Grace La Liberté. They were both among the founders of the Ledger's Walking Group, which has been going for many years. And Ruth, last year, passed her 100th birthday, but she died recently, and her best friend Grace also did. So, people are donating for books and... And a grant from the Eastern Connecticut Gardening Association, 24872. And in August, another $200 donation in memory of Margaret Brown. So, there's been... People have been generous to the library, didn't you give us, I guess? Even though we've had to close some. Currently, we have about $26,566, but there are things yet to be deducted from that. That's what shows at the bank at this point. And I will send out the reports, or Gail will send out the reports after she makes sure I didn't miss them much. That's it.
Wow, Carol.
Questions? I will attempt to answer questions, but no guarantee. Anybody?
Yeah, this is Beth.
Okay, Beth.
Is there... Is it because City Hall people there are backlog because of staffing that they can't update new stuff?
I hired somebody new to replace someone who retired, and this person has been there for several months, but they haven't quite gotten to the speed, I think.
Actually, what they did, they assigned it to an interesting staff person. So, he's doing his regular job and the treasurer's job.
Now, wasn't he splitting a jo... I thought he was a coworker with somebody else splitting a job.
No, no, well, he's got other people helping him.
Oh, okay.
For the treasurer's job.
That might be part of the confusion, too, if it's in several hands. So.
I've got the August spreadsheet, and that negative in the carryover was a transfer made for the last fiscal year. So, we showed it as a negative from what we thought was gonna be a carryover. And next month, there'll be another negative for the remaining fiscal year 2000 invoices.
And these are because they have not yet been deducted by the town. Is that true, or is it something?
Yes, correct.
These are the ones that are still outstanding, although the bills have been...
The bills have been paid.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Any other question? Sorry.
I spoke with Ian today, and I think we'll be up to date next month when September comes out.
It's so confusing to have books not reconciled with the town and the bank at the same time that we're trying to finish up the fiscal year, which is always a headache. I always get confused on all of that. So, mash them all together and drive Carol crazy.
Well, again, thank you. I know I've thanked you in the past for this, but it really is a Herculean task, and I really do appreciate you taking it on and understanding it. And Gail, I know you helped as well, so, you know, but just, it's appreciated.
Rest of the year, it's pretty easy, but...
Thank you. All right, so then, Gail, your report.
Let me see if I get back to it.
Okay.
Thank you for putting that up.
Okay. All right, um, we will officially stop collecting fines on October 1st, although we've continued to waive all fines because of the pandemic. More Lyon libraries have made the decision to eliminate fine, and I'm pleased that Ledger is now among that list. I did speak with the mayor. He thought it was fine. He was perfectly on board with it. He had read the report from last month and said, "Let's do it." So, October 1st is the date. We'll still bill for items that are not returned, which currently happens after an item is 21 days overdue. So, when a book is checked out, it goes out for three weeks. Lyon automatically renews things now twice, as long as no one's waiting for it. After those automatic renewals, if the book is not returned and the patron does not renew it, they will be billed after 21 days. We started to see an increase in the use of the library with patrons coming in, returns filling up, and students working both inside and outside of the library. Stacy's promoting the national program of 1,000 books before kindergarten. We encourage parents to read with their preschoolers, and she has seen an increase in homeschoolers coming in and asking about resources. I did also speak with the mayor about the town COVID policy and what would happen should a staff person or patron either come down with COVID or be exposed to it. They do have a policy in place, and it will be reviewed to be sure it covers a positive exposure. At the library, for example, we may close one building, but keep the other one open, and the staff involved would need to self-quarantine. That's assuming that staff at the other library had not been exposed. The building will also get deep cleaning. The regular cleaning protocols we put in place seems to be working well. The custodian does a thorough wipe down of all surfaces and cleans the bathrooms in each library on the day she is here. She works five days a week. Staff periodically wipe down surfaces and touch points throughout the day as they get used. We have disposable keyboard covers on the public computers, which are wiped down after each use and changed out every day. The staff computers have reusable keyboard covers that wash down when a shift changes. Staff have been able to stay socially distanced and use the assigned phone, so they each have their own phone and they're not cross-contaminating. Under staff news, I hired two library assistants to replace Kim Farco and Sue Sexton, who did not return last June. I hired Lorraine Healy and Stephanie Akers, both of Ledger's. They are both regular library users and are a welcome addition to the staff. Under building news, we are getting closer to a new HVAC system at the library. The components have been ordered, and once everything is in, the work will begin, tentatively scheduled for the end of September, early October. And it's my...
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Gail?
I do. I'm a little confused about the overdue books business. It's just a matter of the numbers. In the minutes we have, that we had said when something was overdue for 45 days, they would be fined, I believe that's what it was, and... Or not fined, but charged. But then in this, based on the guidance here, it's after its 21 days overdue. Now, that may have to do with after the automatic renewals, but even that doesn't add up.
No, when I went back and talked with Andy at Lyon, I had the wrong information. After 21 days, the items go to bill, and that's pretty standard throughout Lyon.
So, it's how many... But that doesn't add up to 45, even?
25 days is incorrect.
When they renew, they renew for one week at a time, right?
No, they renew for the... Whatever the law will is for the item. So, if it's a book, it will be new for three weeks. If it's a one-week video, it will be new for one week.
So, and they renew it twice, so that will be like nine weeks, and then 21 more days they bill.
Correct, correct.
Oh, okay, very gentle.
Yeah, this is Beth. I had the same question. Because we passed last week the 45 days. So, I was a little confused about the 21 days and the 45 days as well.
It's actually 41, not 45. I had that incorrect.
So, do we need to revise our motions and stuff from last week?
I can see it.
Oh, we can... Yeah, so your motion revising the...
So, they each have their own phone, and they're not cross-contaminating. Under staff news, I hired two new library assistants to replace Kim Furakko and Sue Sexton, who did not return last June. I hired Lorraine Healy and Stephanie Akers, both of Ledgers. They are both regular library users and are a welcome addition to the staff. Under building news, we are getting closer to a new HVAC system at the library. The components have been ordered, and once everything is in, the work will begin, tentatively scheduled for the end of September, early October. And it's my pleasure.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Gail?
I do. I'm a little confused about the overdue books business. It's just a matter of the numbers. In the minutes we have, that we had said when something was overdue for 45 days, they would be fined, I believe that's what it was, and, or not fined, but charged. But then, in this, based on the guidance here, it's after it's 21 days overdue. Now, that may have to do with after the automatic renewals, but even that doesn't add up.
No, when I went back and talked with idiot Lion, I had the wrong information. If after 21 days that the items go to bill, and that's pretty standard throughout Lion.
So, it's how many, but that doesn't add up to 45, even?
25 days is incorrect.
When they renew, they renew for one week at a time, right?
No, they renew for the, whatever the law rule is for the item. So, if it's a book, it will renew for three weeks. If it's a one-week video, it will be new for one week.
So, and they renew it twice? So, that will be like nine weeks, and then 21 more days they bill.
Correct, correct.
Oh, okay, very generous.
Yeah, this is Beth, I had the same question. Because we passed last week the 45 days. So, I was a little confused about the 21 days and the 45 days as well.
Yeah, it's actually 41, not 45. I had that incorrect.
So, do we need to revise our motions and stuff from last week?
I can shoot it.
Oh, we can cast a new motion revising the bill time to 21 days, and I'll make that motion. Someone will second it, we can get it done.
Sure, I'll second, since I did last time for the other one. We'll keep it even.
Yeah, that's great, so, any, I realized the thing that I was looking for before, and I'm just going to throw this under the discussion of it. The motion we made last week was to recommend eliminating overdue fines. The fact that the mayor approved it, is it okay that the word "recommend" is not in that motion?
That was part of my motion, yes.
Yeah, but it's not in, it didn't get captured in the minutes. So, I don't know if we need to change that, and then also have, you know, maybe that can be part, I don't know if it's, we need to correct the minutes that way, and then also, you know, discuss the 21-day motion that's out there now.
Well, I'm talking about, I have to recommend in the motion, I just, we don't have to change the motion from the last meeting, that can stand, we're just changing it tonight.
Okay, so it doesn't matter that that one was a little bit incorrect, we're just overriding it?
We'll go after 21 days.
Okay.
Okay, so what is the motion that I'm writing? A motion to eliminate overdue fines for books that are more than 21 days overdue?
Yes.
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 No, no, it's to eliminate, it's to recommend eliminating overdue fines, but charging for lost materials due if items are not returned within.
Within 21 days, not 45 days.
Yeah.
We're not recommending tonight, we're not, we're just.
That's true, okay.
Lines, and bill them after 21 days.
I think we did the recommending last month, because I didn't know if the mayor had the way in on the actual idea of doing that, and I wanted to check with him. So, this follow-up motion is good, it's stating that the commission, that the library will be eliminating fines and charging for overdue items after 21 days. Charging or billing, billing for items not returned after 21 days.
Okay.
Okay. Now, obviously, if somebody returns it when they get a bill, that offsets the bill. They can still bring the book back and not pay the bill. Do you follow that?
Well, after 21 days, they're going to, they've got a fee anyway. Don't they already have, don't they get a fee even if they bring it back after 21 days?
No, there'll be no fee if they bring it back. What they'll get, after 21 days, they'll get a bill for the cost of the book, which assumes that the book is lost. If it's not lost, and they bring the book back, then they don't pay the bill.
That's just policy you've had right along, correct?
Right.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Sorry.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. And then, can I just ask a question, and this goes back to the minutes, because I finally found the section I couldn't find. Do we need to, I mean, I know it's a motion that's obsolete, but do we need to correct the minutes to have the ones from August include the word "recommend", or is it, does it not matter anymore? And I'm showing, this is if you scroll down under the minutes, new business, the last sentence. Under overdue fines discussion.
Motion to eliminate overdue fines, but charge for lost materials due if items are not returned within 60 days, amended to 45 days. So, now we're just amending it to 21 days, right?
Right, so my only question is, on that, back in August, we definitely had the word "recommend" in there, because we weren't sure about the mayor. Does it matter? Do we need to fix those minutes, that motion in those minutes to correct that, even though it's an obsolete motion?
Was "recommend" actually in the motion, or was it that we just discussed it that way?
No, it was definitely part of the motion, because Gail was rightfully concerned that we were basically making a motion about something that was really his decision. So, we wanted to make sure we had the word "recommend" in there, until she got a chance to talk to the mayor.
So, then that's a correction to the minutes, I suppose.
Right, right, right. That was what I was looking for at the beginning, and I couldn't find it. So, I'm suggesting making that correction, but I'm also asking if maybe it doesn't matter, because we've overwrote it with a no motion. So, I just want your input, Gail, on that.
Um, I think either way works. I think you're right, we were making, or you were making the recommendation last month.
That's right.
You could put it in there as a correction, that the motion was a recommendation.
That's what I, that's what I said, so, I think Ellen just missed the word "recommendation".
Yeah, probably.
So, let's correct the minutes by adding the word "recommend", motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend elimination of overdue fines.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, and I know it's a minor detail, but I, especially when you said that the, you know, the mayor read this and was fine with it, I just sort of wanted to make sure we didn't overstep, because we were very cognizant of not doing that, and I just, the minutes don't really reflect that. But I think the new motion from tonight is great, and I'm glad we have the numbers all fixed. And sorry to get a little hung up on a technicality, but I just wanted to make sure that got corrected.
No, it's fine, but when we go back to number four on the original agenda, review and approval of the meeting minutes, I had already wrote that that had carried, so it carried subject to the correction, right?
As corrected.
Yeah, is that something that's able to be fixed, or?
Say as corrected.
Oh, yeah, I'm just writing it.
Okay. Okay, awesome, thank you. And I'm sorry, I couldn't find it at first, I knew there was something, but then it really threw me. Okay, as far as committee reports, friends, John?
The friends are basically inactive right now, they can't really do anything, they can't run the book seller, because we're not accepting other donations. I do know that books are being sold, they're going out, and there's big holes in the shelves, especially in Gail's Ferry. But we're not accepting books, so, yeah, I don't believe they have any programs scheduled, either with Zoom or otherwise.
No, no, they have not, we have not gotten together. However, there is a meeting coming up in October.
If the friends wanted to do some sort of quarantine of donations, is that even something that the library would have room or possibility of doing, or is that not even an option?
We've been very, very careful, kind of waiting to see what happened when the schools were back in session.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, we've talked about it with Sarah, and I think for now, the feeling was, let's just wait and see. Give it another couple of weeks.
The way they're donated, it's difficult. I mean, people just, in Gail's Ferry, for example, they just come in and they dump the books in the outside lobby, and anybody can access those books.
Oh, that's a good point.
That would be a major problem.
And most libraries are not, are not accepting donations. We're actually doing a lot more than many libraries are. I was reading about a library today that is just starting to open, and they're only opening by appointment. And only two people at a time can come in. This is in Kent, on the other side of state, and I know it's a small library, but even some of the big city libraries are not doing as much as we're doing. Being very cautious.
Yeah, I think that's wise, I just, just making sure, that's great. Any, oh, go ahead, John.
It's unfortunate that we have to do that. Some of the books are being sold, but we can't replace them. But, it'll be happier days if next year comes, but.
Yeah, that would be lovely.
And unfortunately, it's going to impact their budget for next year, which they're going to be taking up at the next meeting.
Right.
And they've always been very generous to the library, so it's going to be a much scaled-down budget this year.
Yep.
Alright, any old business? Nope, about new business? Wow, okay, unless there's something I'm missing, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Wow, quickest meeting ever.
Well, we haven't gotten the motion, or we haven't gotten it approved in second, or, you know, firsted and seconded.
Okay, I'll move. Who seconded?
Alright, I.
I'm not sure who did it first, I seconded, Cheryl seconded.
Thank you.
Alright, so I assume there's no objection to that, and we're going to adjourn the meeting at 7:32. And thank you, everyone, for being here, and keep staying safe, and, you know, doing the good stuff for the library, so.
Thank you all.
Okay, bye-bye.
You're doing well.
Yes.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.